That was noticed and posted for our special board meeting. It's Friday, November the 18th, 2022, and we're in the Board of Supervisors hearing room at 1415 Melody Lane, Bisbee, Arizona. Any item on this-
Why am I being muted?
I'm the one that's speaking, so you should be muted. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion and possible action, and we begin with the roll call. District one-
Crosby is here.
District two, Supervisor English is present. District three-
Supervisor Judd is present.
We have a complete board. Members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling 602-609-7513, or 888-680-6714. Conference ID 609-601-174. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call 520-432-92004. The board may permit public comment during the discussion of any item on this agenda. To speak on an agenda item, you need to complete and return the speaker request form to the clerk of the board prior to the start of the meeting. We have only one action item, and it is to accept the election results, and I need to have a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, I move we accept the election results certified and submitted by the Cochise County Elections Department as the official canvas for the general election held on November 8th, 2022.
I second it.
I have a motion and a second. We do have a presentation from our Elections Director, Ms. Mara, to give us the information of what we are certifying and submitting.
Ms. Mara?
Madam Chair, can we start? Can we remind everyone to mute their microphones online, because we're having a lot of background noise, so please mute.
Yes, would you please mute your microphones? Thank you. Ms. Mara?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. The purpose of a canvas is to determine if the results are accurate and the election conducted within the legal guidelines set forth in Arizona statute, and that no abnormalities or defects in the process were encountered or noted. This is the fourth successful election that we've conducted in Cochise County this year. The election program itself was tested seven times utilizing two test decks, a pre-printed deck of 952 ballots from the program vendor, and a separate test deck of 1,074 ballots from the printer hand-marked by election officials and board members. This process ensures all 174 ballot styles on the 19-inch ballot were tested successfully. A pre-election logic and accuracy testing was performed on October 3rd as required by law, utilizing eight batches of 737 ballots with a combination from the test decks. The results were an exact match. The Arizona Secretary of State's office performed the state logic and accuracy testing on October 5th with political party representatives from both parties represented. No other members of the public were in attendance. The testing was successful with all votes accurately tabulated by Central Camp and Vote Center election equipment. Three early boards convened on October 25th and were excused on November 15th. There were 77,394 active registered voters in this election with a turnout of 60.1%. 54,838 voters were mailed an early ballot at their request, or if they are on the active early voting list, resulting in 75% of those voting early. 550 voters were mailed an incorrect ballot style in the Wilcox and Douglas AMA election due to human error in the recorder's office. These voters were sent the correct ballot, and 413 of those returned the corrected ballot, and that was accepted. Fifty-six voters did not correct the ballot they returned, and those ballots were adjudicated by the early boards. That ensured that those voters were not disenfranchised on the races they were legally allowed to vote, and those ballots were tabulated. This error has since been corrected in that office, so it doesn't occur in the future. All vote centers opened promptly at 6:00 a.m., all but two were closed by 7:30 p.m. Fourteen of those had voters in line when they opened, and those lines were steady all day, with the average wait being 40 minutes and the longest an hour and a half. This was an exceptionally long ballot, with 10 statewide propositions and up to six local propositions. A mathematical formula is used every election to determine how long it takes a voter to complete a ballot based on the number of races, the number of contested races, the propositions, the number of check-in stations and voting equipment. If voters were prepared and completed their sample ballot and did their research prior to coming to vote in person, the average time to complete the ballot was seven minutes. The minimum time with no voter preparation was 22 minutes. Delays are created for all voters when some are not prepared. 11,994 voters showed up at our 17 vote centers on Election Day. That was 25% of the turnout. The phone bank opened at 4:30 a.m. on election morning and ran through 10:30 p.m. with approximately 150 calls that are typical on Election Day. We received no serious complaints from voters, observers, or poll workers. The first release of votes occurred on Election Night at 8:05 p.m. with 22,790 early votes released. That included all but about 5,200 ballots that were received from the recorder's office on November 7th and Election Day, November 8th. Results were posted efficiently and accurately during each posting to the Secretary of State online site. There were no problems with the county website being able to handle the huge amount of traffic that we get on an Election Night. We had four postings. The last one occurred at 10:50 with all 17 vote centers reporting. The Election Department was closed and staff left at approximately 11:45 p.m. Election Night. 4,100 early ballots were dropped off on Election Day at vote centers. That's nearly twice the amount that we normally get. Those were tabulated and posted to the website in several batches after being verified and accepted by the recorder, and those results were finalized on November 16th at 10:00 a.m. The recorder's office utilized five drop boxes again at the county service centers. These boxes are available during normal business hours only as they are inside the facilities. The drop box in Bisbee is outside but locked on nights and weekends. 7,724 ballots were deposited during the early voting cycle as a combined total from all those locations, indicating voters appreciate that alternative to mailing their ballot back, which also saves the county postage. 842 people voted in person during the regular business hours at the recorder's office from October 12th to November 4th, Friday before election. Seventeen people utilized emergency voting on Monday, November 7th, at the recorder's office. One voter requested to use the curbside voting service that was established this year on Election Day. 227 provisional ballots were cast, and 117 were accepted by the recorder. Those were tabulated and posted to the website on November 16th. Provisional ballots were down again significantly from in the past using the new express poll tablets, along with the following law that provides a voter who received an early ballot can vote a regular ballot absent any reason to vote provisionally. This prevented nearly 3,000 voters from having to vote a provisional ballot, which takes significant time for recorder staff to verify. There were no issues with the e-poll book tablets, as we ensured full testing in the primary election, resulting in no errors exporting the data. That was the first time those tablets had been used, and we've been using electronic poll books for over 20 years. They go through an extensive testing prior to each election to ensure accuracy, just like all the equipment, and we had no issues. Voters had five business days, which is standard, until 5:00 p.m. on November 16th, that was Wednesday, to cure signatures on early ballots. The Veterans Day holiday on Friday extended that date to Wednesday. It's normally on Tuesday. There were 609 ballots pending signature cure. 255 were cured by those voters, and the rest are rejected by the recorder, as are any ballots received after 7:00 p.m. on Election Night. Final unofficial results were posted at 3:15 yesterday with all official write-in candidates assigned. There were 2,135 write-ins in eight races with 22 official candidates. Only those races are reviewed and assigned in the results. 575 legitimate write-in votes appear in those results out of 2,135. Overall, voters wrote in 10,188 names or filled in those ovals, which still requires two people of opposite party to verify and takes a significant amount of time and taxpayer dollars. The hand count by the political parties commenced with the Democratic Party Chair and a representative from the Republican Party present on November 9th at 2:00 p.m. At that time, they drew two vote centers by random lot, Vote Center 2 and Vote Center 5, and two early batches, vote batch number one and batch number 30, to hand count. The hand count boards convened at 9:00 a.m. on Saturday, November 12th, and concluded at 5:00 p.m. with no discrepancies indicating 100% match in all four races. 1,802 ballots were reviewed by those four boards of 12 members representing equal representation from both parties, and the report was filed with the Secretary of State as required on November 14th. A post logic and accuracy test was performed yesterday and produced the same results as the pre logic and accuracy test performed on October 3rd using 737 test ballots. We conducted 10 jurisdictional elections this election cycle, the city of Sierra Vista and the town of Wachukah City for a mayor and council, and the city of Bisbee for Proposition 421. We conducted elections for Bowie Water District Board members, Palominas, Sierra Vista, St. David Unified School Board members, a budget override for Benson Unified and Bisbee Unified School, and a bond for Wilcox Unified School. The county also had two citizen-driven propositions related to establishing an active management area in the Wilcox and Douglas water basins. We conducted 10 poll worker training classes. 195 poll workers were trained during the week of October 17th. We hosted two classes back-to-back. The Poll Worker Handbook and the training are posted to the website, as we've done since 2018. It's a transparent system. County employees used as election workers, we had 12 that delivered and picked up the voting equipment, nine troubleshooters on Election Day and phone bank, 15 county employees work as couriers on Election Night with partners of opposite party from the public, and most of those are directors of departments. And one employee worked at a vote center as a poll worker on Election Day. It takes a huge team effort to pull off a successful election, which we've learned over the years, and I continue to be honored to represent this county as the election official. The Secretary of State will conduct the statewide canvas on December 5th. It is expected there will be at least one statewide automatic recount that will occur during mid-December and finish by Christmas. None of the races in the county resulted in a margin narrow enough to conduct an automatic recount this election. I believe this election was conducted within the legal requirements of all state and federal laws, and the results should be certified by the Board of Supervisors. Madam Chair, that concludes my presentation for the canvases of the November 8th, 2022 general election.
Thank you, Ms. Mara. That was very complete, a lot of information for us, and as always, you know, there were no problems to report. I think there was a lot of concern from the public, as they have shown up here today, that make sure that the elections are fair, that they're reported accurately. I do have a number of people who wish to speak on this issue, but first I'm going to ask if Ms. Judd or Mr. Crosby have any questions for Ms. Mara.
No, I found her report to be very thorough. I read it all, and I thank you very much.
Thank you, Supervisor.
That is all my comments, but that's all for now.
Okay.
Mine was quite similar. I appreciate-
Ms. Judd, could you speak a little more clearly? We can't hear you.
Okay. Madam Chair, I don't know what the issue is with that. I've had to use my tablet at the last minute, so I also was pleased with having the report ahead of time. That was good to be able to read through, and you did a very good job. Thank you. I have no questions.
Okay. As usual, we do allow the public to make comments and things for us to consider when we are voting, but the volume here speaks loudly, and I'm not sure if you're all going to say the same thing or not. And if you want to be here for the weekend, or if we can complete this evening, I will I think I will start with those that only wanted their names read instead of speaking to get those out of the way. First of all, we have two people who wish to have their names read as opposed. That's, excuse me, three, Kevin O'Brien and June O'Brien-Herford, Ella Roberts-Herford, and Jenny Walston-Ciara Vista, wanted their names as opposed to us accepting the election results. I do have a list of people who wanted their names read in favor of us accepting the election results and certifying. Douglas Whitney, Sierra Vista, Deborah Anbinder, Portal, Helen Snyder, Portal, Alice Wakefield, Portal, Diane Davidson, Portal, Marjorie Murphy, Portal, Henry Camacho, Portal, Carolyn Nordstrom, Portal, Robert Rodriguez, Portals, Barbara Alice Miller, Portal, Peter M. Wassers, Portals, and Chris Beetz, Bisbee, Christine Rhodes, Bisbee, and Ronnie Herbert. I don't see her last name there. So those were wanted to know wanted us to know that they were in favor. Now, the speaker request forms that I have are in order of when they were accepted and sent to the board office, so that's the way that we decide who gets to speak first. Again, there are so many of you. I'm going to ask that we do this in batches of five, and I have no idea if they're for or against. These are simply the ones that asked to speak. And the first five, if you would line up, will give you three minutes, and you give your name, address, and then you have three minutes. So the first one is Randall Limbok, second is Radford Hyde, third is Jeannie Benda Whitney, fourth is Kara Harris, and fifth is Elizabeth Tyndall.
Madam Chair, respectfully, I've seen my time to Paul Rice, Ryan Steiner, or Daniel Wood.
I don't know how I find them, but if they if you wish to not speak, that's your choice. I would prefer not to have to chase people around as to who gets three and who gets six and- All right, so if you sit down now, we're going to say that you spoke, and you're giving your term time to what was the name? Okay. Radford?
Yes. My name is Radford Hyde from Sierra Vista. I am speaking to you all today to recommend that facts about the status of the Cochise County voting equipment be researched, so that each board member is fully informed about the details prior to making their decision to certify the vote. As you likely already know, Daniel Wood, Ryan Steiner, and Paul Rice have extensively researched the Arizona elections processes and requirements. I urge you all to consider granting these gentlemen a formal forum, perhaps in a scheduled special board meeting, to allow them to give a detailed presentation on the public record of their findings, which will allow scrutiny from all sides. The issue at hand and the primary sticking point is the possible illegality of using the existing machinery in our election counts. This has been detailed by them in comments on previous meeting agenda items, as well as exhibits that have previously been presented to each of you. As a refresher, they are asserting that these machines violate Arizona Revised Statute 16442B, which a segment states, "Those machines or devices have been tested and approved by a laboratory that is accredited pursuant to the Help America Vote Act of 2002." They assert, "The laboratory that certifies our election equipment was not legally accredited according to the requirements of that act. Please schedule a special meeting as soon as possible to allow these gentlemen to place their findings on the record for scrutiny by everyone." Thank you.
I am Jeannie Benda Whitney, resident of Sierra Vista, Cochise County. I am in Supervisor Judd's district. I urge the Board of Supervisors to certify and confirm the election results for the 2022 election. I want my vote to count. There are no prob there were no problems at the polls, there were no problems with the ballots, there were no problems with the machines that counted the votes, and there is no empirical evidence of any problems. I urge the Board of Supervisors to do their duty.
Kara? Elizabeth?
Is that okay? Perfect. Good afternoon. I'm Elizabeth Tyndall from Sierra Vista. Cochise County voters have been on quite the roller coaster this past month with antics from our rogue supervisors, Judd and Crosby, and even Recorder Stevens. Despite this, Lisa Mara and the Elections Department have managed to conduct an election that was fair and accurate. We should all thank Mrs. Mara for both her professionalism and knowledge about the entire election process. Today, we are here to witness the certification of all this work. I would like to thank all of the election workers, the poll workers from both parties, observers from both parties, and all the special boards and other folks that make this process work. Anyone that endeavors to be a part of this process or to observe this can see just how secure our elections are. The Supervisors should certify the election results today and allow our county and state to move forward from this embarrassing stunt from our county electeds. Once again, thank you all. Thank you to all those that have done the work, from the volunteers observing counts to our dedicated county employees who have upheld the law and treated Cochise County voters with the respect they deserve. Thank you.
The next five are Sedonia Luisa Glenn, Jeff Sturgis, Jennifer Angel, or Angel, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, Sherri Arnold, and Shelley Holloman. Do you know if they asked to be online? I don't see an indication here. If you are one of the people that was on that I called your name, are you online and expected to speak?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here. I'm Shell Holloman.
Yes, this is Jeff Sturgis, and I'm online.
Okay, is Lisa Glenn online? Then I will move on to Jeff Sturgis, online.
Hello, I'm Jeff Sturgis from Sierra Vista. I must assume that the vote today will finally be one of reason, although with two-thirds of the Board of Supervisors purposely injecting chaos and doubt into the process at every step, who knows? With the assumption that reason will finally prevail, I want to express my gratitude to Supervisor Ann English and Election Director Lisa Mara for their steadfast adherence to the rule of law. They have stood firm for the rule of law in the face of unethical and illegal actions of Supervisors Tom Crosby and Peggy Judd and Recorder David Stevens, who have abused the machinery of government. These three elected officials with their disregard for the rule of law leave us taxpayers holding a hefty bill to cover their legal defense while making Cochise County government a national joke. Whenever the three Supervisors have met, Supervisor English has stood out as the only adult in the room. She maintains her calm, deliberate mastery of chairing the meetings while having to endure the mindless but dangerous antics of the other two Supervisors. By her words and by her votes, Supervisor English has stood firm against a storm of manufactured controversy over nothing while representing the dignity of the office she holds and the rule of law. Similarly, while withstanding the attempt by Recorder Stevens to usurp her official duties and the more than absurd attempt by Supervisors Crosby and Judd to sue her, Lisa Mara has quietly, efficiently, and with great integrity fulfilled her responsibilities to Cochise County, Arizona, and our constitutional republic. As anyone with some intelligence and willing to look deeper than hysterical references to big lie conspiracy theories knows, the elections, as supervised by Lisa Mara, have never been validly challenged as being anything but fairly and accurately administered. Both Supervisor English and Election Director Lisa Mara deserve our country's, our counties' deep gratitude for their competency, their courage, and their patriotism. Thank you.
Jennifer Angel, are you online? If not, then we'll skip Jennifer, and I will go to Sherri Arnold. Are you online? Sherri Arnold?
Madam Chair, it does look like they are online, but possibly on mute at this point.
So I'll give you 30 seconds, Jennifer. If you can unmute, then you can have your three minutes.
Madam Chairman, Lisa Glenn is also on a telephone, and she is on mute, so I would call for her again if you would, please.
I don't hear Jennifer. Okay, we're going to move on from Jennifer. Sherri Arnold, are you online and on mute unmuted? If not, then I'm moving on.
Madam Chair, if I may, it looks like that last speaker was actually Jennifer Angel, who was online.
Did she give her name and phone number? I didn't hear that. Or address?
No. Madam Chair, this is Supervisor Judd. I was just noticing that Lisa Glenn is on a telephone, and you might want to call for her again. I don't I haven't heard anyone else come up, or Lisa, for that matter, but I see her here.
I heard you, Ms. Judd, and I was trying to get through the five that I had here before I went back. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Shelley Holloman, that's part of the last five. Are you online? You don't seem to be in the audience.
Yes, ma'am.
Then you have three minutes. Your name, address.
My name is Shell Holloman, and I reside in Sierra Vista. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I come in opposition to certifying this election. Previously, you were all put on notice with actual proof that this election and several other voting cycles have been done illegally with use of these unaccredited, uncertified voting machines. Not one of you can produce to we, the people, an actual legitimate certification for any machine in the state, and you would have by now if you had it. All the current so-called certifications are false documents, not even signed by the proper person. You cannot certify our elections, knowing that the machines violate ARS 16442B, without acting in bad faith. You have the duty to us, the residents of Cochise County, to do the right thing and reject the election results based on the evidence of malfeasance of these machines and vote for a special election in December. One day, one vote, on paper, no machines can count, which is not illegal, and results by the end- by the end of the day. It is how we did it for many decades prior to now, and I'm not going to accept any excuse that it takes too long, or too many errors, or too costly. I'm done with the corruption going on, and all of you are usurping your elected positions that you hold based on the evidence presented over and over to all or most of the Board of County Supervisors. We, the people, have gotten informed and educated, and we're not going to allow this fraud of our elections to continue. And there are consequences if you willfully violate our civil rights under both the Arizona and U.S. constitutions. I do support Ms. Judd and Mr. Crosby, who are trying to do the right thing, but frankly, Chairwoman English, you stated that you firmly believe in these machines you purchased, so it tells me you are the fool who refuses to believe that you have been fooled, given all the evidence presented to you, or you're corrupt and need to be replaced. Thank you for your attention.
Okay, we're going to move back now and see if there is Lisa Glenn on the phone. Is there a Lisa Glenn on the phone? We'll give you 30 seconds, Lisa, if you're listening, and then we'll move on, Ms. Judd. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the next five, Allison Morris, Alex Gulada, Leslie Himes, Oscar Consio, Marco Villalobos, and Eric Villa, and Brian Steiner. Are you Allison?
Yes. Good afternoon, I'm Allison Morris from Portal, speaking on behalf of myself and 30 other community members from Portal who approve this message. Despite the upheaval and confusion of the past several weeks, law and order has prevailed thanks to Elections Director Lisa Mara, County Attorney Brian McIntyre, and Supervisor Anne English. Despite the multiple unlawful attempts to interrupt and dismantle our reliable and longstanding election process, our county is ready to submit our election results for canvassing. This is nothing short of phenomenal. Elections Director Lisa Mara and her staff have demonstrated an unwavering dedication to their jobs and an extraordinary commitment to the citizens of Cochise County. Through the threat of attempted illegal actions and the turmoil that ensued, our ballots were kept secure and counted with 100% accuracy. I have nothing but praise and admiration for a woman who faithfully and fearlessly executed the responsibilities of her job while the safety and integrity of that job were in danger. Lisa has been employed by the county since 2012, with Elections Director being her fourth role. She is serving her third term as President of the Election Officials Association that represents all 15 counties in Arizona. She is nationally certified election registration administrator from Auburn University and the Election Center. Less than 2,000 people in this country have that designation. She also serves on the United States Election Assistance Local Leadership Council. We are very fortunate to have Lisa, and our heartfelt gratitude goes out to her and her hardworking staff. What has transpired over the past few weeks is a clear attack on our democracy, causing confusion, doubt, and utter chaos. Just go back to the Board of Supervisors calendar and see the numerous emergency meetings, special meetings, and canceled meetings. Listen to the recordings of our county supervisors putting forth motions, then changing their minds to modify or retract their motions. Most shocking, however, is that two of our supervisors gathered secretly, without the third one present, a flagrant violation of the open meeting law, to sue a government employee and public servant, Lisa Mara, personally for doing her job. This is completely unconscionable and unacceptable. To all of you who have showed up to speak out against these outrageous attempts to undermine our election process, thank you. As John Lewis said, "When you see something that is not right, not just, not fair, you have a moral obligation to say something, to do something." Our children and their children will ask us, "What did you do? What did you say?" For some, this may be hard, but we have a mission and a mandate to be on the right side of history. And from a letter I received from President Biden earlier this week, I leave you with this. "The battle for the soul of America has many fronts, and the right to vote freely and fairly and to have that vote count is most fundamental. We have a duty to defend it. I'm grateful to all of you who take this duty seriously, and I thank you for listening."
The next is Alec Gulada, and he's on Teams. Mr. Gulada?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, thank you. May I begin?
Yes, you have three minutes. You have your name and your address.
Sure. Alec Gulada, 64 East Broadway, Tempe, Arizona. I'm with a group called All Voting is Local Action, and I was at your October 24th meeting. Election Director Mara noted that this election came off without a hit, and she and the elections workers in Cochise County should be congratulated. Although I have the utmost respect for Election Director Mara, I disagree with her conclusion that the election came off without a hit. There was one significant aberration in this election, and it was the actions of a majority of this Board of Supervisors in the actions that were taken leading up to the election and now the discussions that are being had today. In a democracy, voters decide the outcome of elections, not politicians. The voters of Arizona have spoken, and the Board of Supervisors does not have the legal authority whatsoever to ignore the will of the people. You must canvas and certify the results. These laws are both in Arizona and federal laws. Arizona law makes clear that the Board has no authority to reject the results. Moreover, the Federal Voting Rights Act makes it illegal to fail to count and report lawful votes. If this Board refuses to certify, it will be acting in violation of those laws, and Board members could be exposed to liability therefore. Thus far, the threat of legal action does not seem to have made an impact on the Board of Supervisors in Cochise County, unfortunately. But respect for the rule of law is important, and we hope today that the rule of law will prevail. The claim that Cochise County voting systems were not tested by accredited lab is totally false. It's been debunked by the Election Assistance Commission itself, which is the agency that credits labs. The EAC has never revoked the accreditation of the lab that tested your equipment. This same false claim was rejected by the Arizona Supreme Court, and your voting systems were properly tested and are valid. The Board's only lawful role is to now uphold the will of the people and certify the results of the election. Early on in this process, I heard Commissioner, I'm sorry, Supervisor Judd say, "This wasn't about trying to set aside the results, but trying to give people a fair hearing and a fair shot." But now we hear, here we are, we have the results, and we actually are trying to set them aside if we vote against certification. Please vote in support of certification.
Your time is up, Alex. Leslie Himes?
Leslie Himes? I can speak. Bye. Bye.
Okay. Next is Oscar Consio. Oscar Consio, are you online, Oscar? I don't, I can't tell. You have 30 seconds. Oscar Consio. Next is Marco Villalobos. Marco, are you online? If you're online, you have 30 seconds to turn off the unmute. Next is Eric Villa. Eric Villa, are you online? You have 30 seconds to unmute. Brian Steiner, in person.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Brian Steiner, I'm in Gilton, Arizona. I believe I was reported extra time, correct?
I think you have an extra three minutes.
Okay. That's fine, that's all I need. So I have two documents.
Let's get rid of the mumbling right now. I was in the assumption that three extra minutes was given to Dan, or by two people, by Dan Wood, but I only have Brian with three. Now, do you have a problem with that, six minutes?
I'm good with six minutes. I shouldn't take that one. It lets me go slower. Anyways, I have two documents here that I've submitted for your review. This is the first one. This is going to show the lack of legal accreditation by SLI compliance, which your current ESNS voting systems were falsely certified in May of 2019, I believe it was May 3rd. It shows that no accreditation, this will show that no accreditation was found prior to the 2020 election. It'll also show that none was found immediately afterwards on the EAC website. An affidavit under penalty of perjury was filed on December 1st of 2020, revealing this violation, and this stands as true since it was uncontested. An unlawful certificate, will also show an unlawful certificate of accreditation finally appears on the EAC website in January of 2021 with the wrong signature, that's nonbinding, and it's extended to three years, which is a violation of the VSTL manual 2.0, stating that two years is the maximum. A memo will then appear on the website in January of 2021 with an excuse of COVID for being the reason why the recertification did not take place, even though that recertification was due long before COVID became a problem. The state of accreditation by SLI compliance when your voting systems were certified at the time was unlawful and violated ARS 16442B, where it says labs must be accredited to be used. The documentation will then further explain why the current unlawful certificate of accreditations for SLI compliance, still with the wrong signatures, and it will state who the correct signature should be, are irrelevant since your ESNS voting systems were certified in 2019. And as the gentleman mentioned earlier, in the second presentation or document, it's going to explain the excuse of being shown that 52 U.S. Code 20971(c)(2) is really, it's a bad excuse, but it's their last attempt at trying to justify why they don't have certification and why they've allowed it to lapse. For example, I'm going to show you that the gaming industry here in Arizona, which is truly an industry standard of two years recertification, they have to keep track of 735 vendors, along with employees getting a background check and fingerprint cards. The EAC only manages two labs, and they were not able to do that and keep track of the paperwork. The documentation will also show that they try to make changes going from the VSTL 2.0 manual to the 3.0 manual, where the EAC attempts to try and reduce their liability and responsibility for lack of accreditation of the labs and try to match it with the 52 U.S. Code 20971(c)(2), where they handpick and cherry pick that code. The code does not allow for EAC to blindly enter into and extend a contract for however long the EAC would like. All throughout 52 U.S. Code 20971, you find the words "an expectation of recertification", and nowhere is it left open for recertifications to stop. In order for a recertification to stop or to be revoked, NIST has to recommend it. That is not done. Your current ESNS voting system certified in 2019 under an unaccredited SLI laboratory, at the time of certification, your certification of performance for ESNS, that's going to result in zero legal votes, making your 2022 elections uncertifiable, and any statute compelling you afterwards to certify an election would violate Arizona Constitution, Article 7, Section 7, where it states, "The person receiving the highest number of legal votes shall be declared elected." Your county has zero votes because it used the tabulators. No logic and accuracy test can make them legal at this point, and no lawyer is going to be able to make a case as to why these facts are not true. I yield the rest of my time to Paul Rice.
The next five are Paul Rice, Daniel Wood, and right now I have you for nine minutes, Daniel. Rodolfo Valencia, Gisela Aaron, and Renata Doni. You're Gisela? And you're giving it to who? Okay. So Paul, it looks like you have six minutes. All right, where are the five people? Paul Rice, are you here?
Yes.
Yes, please go now. This is where you were in the line, and so now is your time, and if she's giving you her three minutes, then you've got six.
And Madam Chair, we'll actually give seven minutes for the last speaker. He had a minute left in his speaking.
Okay, seven minutes you get then, Paul.
Yes, my name is Paul Rice, I live in Phoenix, Arizona. And I'm here to talk a little bit about some of the basic components of the accreditation process. We put together a question and answer document, which is going to be available for distribution. We'll put it out on the internet, but it'll be available also to the Supervisors to look at after this. So I just, I'm going to go through this. This is to give everyone a little bit of a background on HAVA, the EAC, the process of accreditation, certification of the machines, and the role of all of that with the Elections Manual and the state rule, or the state law, and how the state and the federal government interact. First of all, what is HAVA? The Help America Vote Act was passed by the U.S. Congress in 2002, October of '02, to make sweeping reforms to the nation's voting process. This law was created in response to the problems associated with the 2000 election, if you remember the Bush-Gore hanging chat incident. HAVA creates new mandatory minimum standards for states to follow in several key areas of election administration. The intent was to assist states by providing a more uniform elections process to reduce the risk of repeating what happened in 2000. What is the EAC? HAVA also ushered in the creation of the Elections Assistance Commission, which outlines the detailed election process requirements that states must follow to be compliant under this law. Since the EAC is governed by HAVA, the rules and procedures promulgated in the EAC manual are binding and have the effect of law. Many of the functions previously the responsibility of the Federal Election Commission, or the FEC, were transitioned to the EAC with passage of HAVA. What is the relationship between HAVA, the EAC, and the country's 50 states? Since the U.S. Constitution grants power to the states to legislate and administer federal, state, and local elections, adoption of HAVA was made voluntary. Each state has made its own decision regarding HAVA participation and the degree of compliance it wishes to follow. Once codified into law, however, that state must follow the EAC rules and procedures outlined in the EAC manual it has chosen to follow. HAVA is federal law, state adoption of HAVA becomes state law. What states participate in HAVA? Virtually all states participate at some level of compliance with HAVA. Some states have limited their participation in HAVA by implementing only narrow provisions of the EAC rules and procedures. Other states, such as Arizona, have adopted the EAC rules and procedures on a more extensive basis. As an incentive to participate, a major provision of HAVA is the authorization to issue annual funding to those states. These dollars assist with the cost of state and county administration of HAVA. How is HAVA made law at the state level? Once each state decides what aspects of HAVA it wishes to adopt, the state legislature codifies HAVA and the applicable EAC manual procedures into law. This means that while HAVA and the EAC rules are federal law, it is the state legislatures who codify this federal language into state law. This area of election law can be found in Title 16 of the Arizona revised statutes, or ARS. What role do the electronic voting machines have with respect to HAVA? While states vary widely in the level of HAVA participation, a primary aspect of adopting HAVA is the implementation of the electronic voting machines. This was key to the emergence of HAVA following the 2000 election. Currently, all 50 states utilize the electronic voting machines in their elections, which is an important requirement to secure and continue federal funding. What is a voting system testing lab? A VSTL is a private company that contracts with the federal government to make sure our electronic voting machines are safe to use in our elections. Its sole purpose-- Its sole purpose is to assure the public that the integrity of each person's vote is protected and that the tabulation process reflects with 100% accuracy the intent of the voter. The process of becoming a government-contracted VSTL begins with the National Institute of Standards and Technology, or NIST. NIST must recommend applicants to the EAC for consideration. The EAC makes the final decision as to what company becomes a VSTL. The only two companies, as Brian mentioned, that are currently authorized and therefore eligible to do this work in recent election cycles are pro-V&amp;V and SLI compliance. What is VSTL accreditation and why is it so important? And this is extremely important, a point that has perhaps been missed. We've probably spoken at half of the counties in the state, and I think this is probably one of the least understood aspects of why the certification of the machines and the accreditation that's required to certify those machines is so extremely important. Once a company is selected to become a VSTL, that company must initially be accredited and then re-accredited by the EAC every two years. This requirement is outlined in the version 2.0 VSTL manual, which is published by the EAC. The accreditation is evidenced by a certificate of accreditation issued by the EAC to the VSTL. This accreditation process is not only legally required, it is vital to maintain the integrity of our electronic voting machines. These machines have been deemed critical infrastructure to safeguard our elections and national security. This vetting process includes an assessment of technical competency, financial stability, records retention, and possibility, most importantly, of conflicts of interest and foreign influence. What is electronic voting machine certification, and how does it differ from VSTL accreditation? An electronic voting machine must be certified before it can be used in any federal, state, or local election. This certification is evidenced by a certificate of conformance, which Brian mentioned, which is issued by the EAC. That certificate can only be used once the electronic voting machine hardware and software has been reviewed, evaluated, approved, and accredited by an accredited VSTL. This certificate is only applicable to the specific software version of the electronic voting machine that appears on the certificate. And for Cochise County and the other 12 counties out of the 15, that would be ESNS version 6.0.4.0. It is important to distinguish between the certification of an electronic voting machine and the accreditation of the VSTL. And I think I'll stop there for now. Thank you.
Daniel Wood, I believe you have nine minutes. First, your name and address, please.
Daniel Wood, Maricopa City, in Arizona here. Okay, to the Board of Supervisors, I'm very concerned that your elected county attorney, Brian McIntyre, is making every effort to force you, the Board of Supervisors, to commit unlawful acts and ultimately interfere with the people's attempt in conducting a lawful election. On October 24th, 2020, while the board was in session, Mr. McIntyre publicly attempted to interfere or appear to interfere with the Board of Supervisors' vote for a lawful hand count of the people's cast vote, in which, by misrepresenting Arizona state law, Mr. McIntyre insinuated that the board was going to commit crimes. It was very clear to the people that the board was making every attempt to act lawfully and in good faith. Therefore, under statute law, the county attorney has a duty to act in the best interests of the county and represent the board. Instead, McIntyre attempted to coerce the board by threatening not to provide legal counsel. By his actions, he violates his legal obligation under ARS 11-532 and ARS 11-403. He should never appear or attempt to interfere with anybody in your duty, and he did so that day. Mr. McIntyre did not stop there. He continued to threaten the board and boards privately obtain legal counsel, privately obtained, not paid by you, legal counsel on November 10th, 2022. While using official Cochise County sealed documents, Mr. McIntyre sent a letter to multiple law firms to include the Valley Law Group, in which the letter provides poor legal analysis of statute and lacks probable cause for such accusations made. In this letter, it is clear attempt to scare individuals from acting lawfully in their duties as counsel and representatives. That letter was sent to multiple, multiple law firms, trying to scare them from providing counsel, where he didn't allow counsel in his official duties. It is the people's concern that Mr. McIntyre is conspiring with others, such as the Secretary of State Katie Hobbs, state elections director Corey Lorick, and Jared Davidson, who is the counsel for Project Democracy. On November 17th, 2022, just recently, they sent a letter. That letter is trying to keep you from doing your lawful duty. Davidson sent a letter to all Board of Supervisors in the state of Arizona, which continued the same veiled threat as by Mr. McIntyre, which appears to be an attempt to coerce government officials into unlawful acts. These valid threats are being made by misrepresenting the state constitution and state law. This is reasonable suspicion here to believe that individuals are working under the color of law to conspire against the people's civil rights in which they are violating U.S. Code 421983 in 1985. We, the people, believe that law warfare is being used to interfere with the people's right to vote and right to representation. We ask that you ask for an investigation into Mr. McIntyre for his dereliction of duty and possible crimes against the civil rights of the people. I am a prior law enforcement officer. I have been taught how to read law and apply law in such a way that it doesn't violate your individual rights. And I'm here to tell you that your county attorney, that your elected county attorney is misrepresenting the law. You want to threaten people? Well, I'm your huckleberry.
If you could keep your comments to what we're doing today, and that's the certifying of the election results. I haven't heard you mention that.
But I am here, I'm here doing the same thing, trying to make sure an election is lawful. And he's doing the same thing. He's threatening these folks the same way because they're trying to make sure elections lawful. So am I going to get the same treatment? Are you going to come after me, lawful, trying to threaten me with code sections and stuff like that? That's what I'm just wondering, because when you're attacking our representatives or who are doing the job that they're supposed to be doing and acting in good faith, you're attacking the people. You're going against the people. That's what you're doing. You're going against the people. We right this ship. We run the government. And right now, y'all are running unlawful elections, and you've got a county attorney using law warfare to threaten county officials. He is your equal. He is not superior to you. He doesn't get to tell you what to do. He can provide opinion, and that's it. You make the decisions based on the law and evidence provided to you. I concede my time. Rest of time to Paul, please.
And that would be Paul who?
Rice.
Again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Rodolfo Valencia? Are you online, Rodolfo? 30 seconds, you can unmute. Okay, we'll move on. And Sela, you gave your time away. First, your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Renata Dany from Sierra Vista, Arizona. I just wanted to report on a few things that I observed while I was a poll watcher here in Cochise County. The first one, when I first started to walk up and I showed my paper, they said that I wasn't on the list. And if it wasn't for the person that was to relieve me, told me that I should call the chair of the Republican Party, and I did so. And amongst the confusion, I was allowed to poll watch. Also, there was a person with the wrong address on their card, and that was still allowed to vote. And then another one was a ballot rejection, and that was only within two hours timeframe. So thank you for your time.
Okay, we'll move on now to the next group. That would be Robert McCormick, Catherine Wilson, James Robert Wilson, John Moss, and Jean Gofoa. It's printed, and I can't really tell. And Henry Conroy.
We call her Jafredo.
And I didn't ask you how many minutes were left that he wanted to give to someone else. Did you keep track of that, Tim?
Madam Chair, I did. It was three minutes.
Okay. All right, Robert McCormick. And James Robert Wilson?
James Robert Wilson, Sierra Vista.
Jean? Henry Conroy?
My name is Henry Conroy. I'm from Sierra Vista. And again, we're here to talk about elections. This part of this started with the whole idea of manual count, and that caused a whole lot of stir, which I don't understand. But what I really would like to talk about is the fact that ARS 16647, the Declaration of Elections to Office and the Delivery of Certification of Election. And this statute states that the Board of Supervisors shall declare elected the person receiving the highest number of votes cast for each office. However you declare the highest number of votes, now take notice that the statute law does not supersede the Constitution. The Arizona State Constitution, Article 7, Section 7, which says that in all elections held by the people in this state, the person or persons receiving the highest number of legal votes shall be declared elected. Take notice that the highest number of legal votes shall be declared. Nothing in the Constitution or the statutes says that you declare anyone elected using illegal votes. Now, this is important because you, the Board of Supervisors, cannot lawfully sign off on the canvas or cast vote report. By signing off on the report, you will go against the people's civil rights under the 14th Amendment, Electoral Due Process, and Equal Protection Clause. This is because, under ARS 16442B, which only permits the use of machines or devices if they have been lawfully certified and accredited by a laboratory pursuant to the Help America Vote of 2002, which you've heard numerous information about those accreditations. And we have provided the Board of Supervisors, the legislature, the executive and judicial branch, evidence showing that the voting machines and devices in the state of Arizona are unlawful due to the lack of accreditation of pro-V&amp;V or SLI compliance. These two laboratories unlawfully certified all Dominion, Union, and ESS voting machines and devices in the state of Arizona. They have been unlawful going back to 2017, and they still remain unlawful to this day. So to the Board of Supervisors, we, the people, ask that you not sign off on the canvas and cast vote report until you receive the highest number of all legal votes, as required in the Arizona State Constitution, Article 7, Section 7. Thank you so much.
Yes, Mr. Rice, would you come back to the microphone, please? According to my math, you've got 3, 6, 9, 12, 15 minutes.
Actually, Madam Chair, we have accounted 18 minutes.
Got another?
There was 18 minutes.
Was it from the past? Because there's only...
Well, that'll give me time to read through this twice then. Go ahead. Can I begin? We were talking about what is the voting machine certification? How does it differ from the accreditation? It's important to distinguish between the certification of an electronic voting machine and the accreditation of the voting system testing lab. The job of the testing lab is to assure the EAC that the machine is working properly, which results in the issuance of a machine certificate. However, the VSTL must be lawfully accredited at the time the machine certification is granted. A company that is not credited at the time the certificate is issued makes that certificate null and void. What companies does Arizona use for its electronic voting machines? I won't go into that because I think we've already talked. Maricopa County uses Dominion. Yavapai County uses Unison, and the other 13 counties, including Cochise, uses ESNS. Who certifies Arizona's electronic voting machines? Technically, it is not the Secretary of State who certifies them. The only two companies are pro-V&amp;V and SLI compliance. Pro-V&amp;V certifies Dominion and Unison. SLI compliance, the ESNS machines, which are your machines. What role does the Secretary of State play in the Arizona elections? The Arizona Secretary of State is responsible for the general administration and oversight of the state's primary and general elections. Maintaining the integrity of the elections is perhaps its most important function. This is accomplished through a variety of Secretary of State resources and offices, including the state of Arizona elections department. And while each Arizona county has been granted individual authority by law to conduct and oversee its own elections, guidance is issued by the Secretary of State through the Arizona Elections Procedure Manual, the EPM. This manual, in conjunction with the Arizona Revised Statutes and the state constitution, governs each county's election procedures. What is the role, what is the responsibility of the Secretary of State with regards to certification of the electronic voting machines? It is the primary responsibility of the Secretary of State to make sure all electronic voting machines used in the state of Arizona are certified for use by the EAC. This includes checking to make sure certificates of conformance for the machines in use is current, as well as assuring the testing labs responsible, that they're responsible for certifying those machines, are lawfully accredited. And they should be maintaining records of that, which actually, we've requested some of that, and it's been three months now under the public records request, and they have refused to provide that information to us. What does the EAC require if there are changes or updates to the electronic voting systems? And this is a portion that may be rather mundane, but again, this is a good education for everybody because this is at the root of our elections, the machines that are being used, and the root, really, I think, of a lot of the problems that we're having. When a new electronic voting system software version is implemented, an accredited testing lab must approve that new software, commonly known as a new or trusted build for certification. The certificate of conformance is then issued by the EAC, showing that the machine is fully initially certified. And these are listed in the EAC website. This is all publicly available information. Once that software has been deployed in the counties, updates are generally recommended by the machine vendor. These updates can be security-related, software upgrades, or any other material change affecting operation of the machines. As per the Arizona Election Procedure Manual, a three-member committee meets three to four times per year to decide on whether to recommend to the Arizona Secretary of State if those proposed updates should be implemented. These changes, referred to as software modifications, require recertification by the VSTL under the same certification guidelines as when the software was initially installed. Changes recommended for approval by the committee are generally adopted by the Secretary of State. These meetings, attended by the machine vendor, the three-person committee, and the Secretary of State representatives are documented in meeting minutes, which are available on the Secretary of State's website. How does the Secretary of State know software modifications have been approved by the testing lab and the EAC? Software updates to be proposed at these committee meetings should have already been approved and certified by the testing lab. approved and certified by the testing lab and the EAC. It is unknown to us how those software update certifications are communicated to the Secretary of State. And as I mentioned, we put a request in with the Secretary of State through the attorney, Amy Chan, under the Arizona Public Records Request Statute 39-121, three months ago. And according to the law, that should be, you know, responded too timely. I have yet to receive a response. Is the county responsible for assuring that the machines are certified and that the VSTL's are accredited? Since each county is granted authority by Arizona law to individually conduct its own elections, the county Board of Supervisors and county elections department are responsible for maintaining the integrity of those elections and abiding by our constitution. Arizona state law and the state election manual, excuse me, by the constitution of Arizona state, ARS and the state election manual. Therefore, if information comes to light that puts in doubt the legality of this election, those government officials acting under their oath of office must address the violation and take appropriate action. Additionally, Arizona counties have traditionally relied on the Secretary of State to make sure their machines are certified. However, because the county contracts individually with the voting machine companies, the county is responsible for adhering to the terms of that contract. And those terms, now, we don't have a copy of the Cochise County contract, often require lawful certification, which means the testing lab must be lawfully accredited at the time the certificate was issued. So, each county should be aware of these terms and maintain a valid certificate of conformance for the machine it uses because it's the entity signing the contracts with the machine, with the machine companies. I think we've talked about the Arizona revised statute 442B. It's important to note here that basically, the counties here may use the machines. They're obligated to make sure they're properly certified if they're going to use them. What does a violation of ARS 16442B and the Arizona Constitution, Article 7.7, mean for our elections? If the voting machines used in the state of Arizona are not lawfully certified, then all votes tabulated by those machines are illegal and they become null and void. What makes, what specifically makes the electronic voting machines uncertified in the state of Arizona? The EAC publishes information, and I'd encourage everybody to go on there and look for yourselves if you're doubting what we're telling you here today. The EAC publishes information about the electronic voting machines on the EAC website. This includes a listing of the machines and software versions used in each county of every state, as well as the date these software versions were certified. Also available to the public are certificates of accreditation for pro-V&amp;V and SLI compliance. The certificates of accreditation for both pro-V&amp;V and SLI compliance had lapsed by the time active accreditation was required to lawfully certify these machines. Does logic and accuracy, the state mandated testing of the machines certify those machines? Logic and accuracy testing is an Arizona-based initiative outlined in the Arizona Elections Manual. And while these tests are conducted by county and state officials to give assurance to the voter that the electronic voting machines are functioning as required under law, this process is outside the scope of HAVA. The EAC requires an accredited federal testing lab to certify those machines. Any process or certification conducted outside the EAC-specific requirements are irrelevant and do not meet the requirements set forth under HAVA. What is the county contingency plan and why is it relevant to the unlawful use of the machines? According to Chapter 4, Section 4 of the Arizona Elections Manual, the officer in charge of elections must develop a written contingency plan in case election operations, including the use of voting systems and any component thereof, are significantly disrupted. A contingency plan should consider all potential sources of disruption, including but not limited to, and it goes through all the different scenarios here, including power outages, systematic equipment failures and malfunctions, and so forth. Natural disasters, it's actually quite extensive. Among other things, a contingency plan must outline how the officer in charge of elections would ensure continuity in voting in case one or more voting locations becomes temporarily or permanently unusable on election day. The officer in charge of elections must file certain contingency information with the Secretary of State at least 10 days in advance of the election. So, clearly, the Arizona Elections Procedures Manual lays out the requirements to the counties for contingency planning, for unplanned events that could disrupt election operations. This is important because a common issue raised in opposition to running Arizona elections by paper ballot only, including a hand count, is that this is logistically not possible. To the contrary, the requirements are spelled out in the Elections Manual clearly. They allow for a hand count and should be part of every county's election planning to begin with. So, I'd just like to close by saying, I don't think in a lot of the county's cases, it's, this is a direct effort or coordinated effort to somehow usurp the law. I believe there's a lack of information to the federal and the state laws and what the states are expected to do when they codify this into law, this federal law. It is not optional. And with all due respect to the Board of Supervisors and all the elected officials, everyone here is in office illegally, really, for the last three elections, '22, '20, and '18, because the machines haven't been certified, as was brought up before, since 2017. So, that should be something that should be taken into consideration. Thank you for your time.
The next speakers are, sorry, I don't know if I'll pronounce this one correctly. Jill Vandenweva, it looks like. Chris Jones. Sarah Mae Pacheco. Kathleen O'Brien. And Philip O'Brien. Are you Jill? Mr. Steiner? Jill? Chris Jones?
Everyone's here has really good intentions and you're all really good people. All I want to say is I'm a computer security specialist and I have been for 25 years. I'm retired now. But as long as you use machines, the elections will never be secure. And it doesn't matter if they're new machines, because new machines can come with bad software. There's all kinds of malware and viruses that can be programmed to work on a keystroke, a touch on a keyboard, a date called an exploit. So, for those reasons, even if all the machines are certified, even if they're thoroughly tested the night before, everything can still go awry on election day. And I just want that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Sarah Pacheco.
Hello, my name's Sarah Pacheco. I live in Hereford, Arizona, on Indigo Sky. And I wanted to just share a quick story experience that I had. In 2014, I worked as a paid staff member of a congressional campaign here in Cochise County. And that vote was so close that an automatic recount had to be triggered, if you remember, back in 2014. And during the recount, I had the opportunity as a paid staff member to observe the process that took place in both the recorder's office and the elections office for three weeks that recount was conducted. And during that election, we had an abnormally large number of provisional ballots and because we weren't using vote centers. So, at that time, after the election, we learned a lot of lessons. We changed a lot of how we did elections. And one of those things was, we went to vote centers. We changed our machines. And I have been an active participant, obviously, as a voter in Cochise County continuously, but also, I ran for office, I've held office, and I've been very, very confident. My confidence in our elections has been increasing, increased ever since that time. Getting to sit in the elections office and watch votes count and then even observe and participate in the hand count, the hand audit, I should say, in years since, I've been an active participant in our voting process for many years. And I have to say that I have full faith and confidence. And I wanted to just let my voice be heard, especially seeing the improvements we've made to the process over the last 10 years. I've been so impressed. And we've answered those, every election, we've improved our processes and procedures and it's gotten better and better. And the duty to canvass and certify results is non-discretionary. I feel failure to canvass this election is completely unacceptable and it's a violation of law. And all you're doing is delaying and causing, like, you're delaying the inevitable and you're stopping a necessary recount. Really close elections cannot proceed to a recount without a canvass. You have to canvass first. You cannot go to a recount unless you have that. So, it has to happen first. And plus, this will cost taxpayers exorbitant amounts of money. So, I just want to state my full faith and confidence in Lisa Mara and the way our election was conducted in Cochise County and urge you to canvass this election. Thank you.
Kathleen O'Brien?
Hi, I'm Kathleen O'Brien from Sierra Vista. And I am in opposition to having you certify the election. And then the reason is, there's the tremendous lack of voter confidence in this election. And I think it was really brought up by Paul Rice with the machines that have not been certified. And as the person two before me said, that the machines can so easily be programmed incorrectly. And as we saw up in Maricopa County, over 60 of the machines broke down. And there's an election judge, Michelle Swannick, who was in Scottsdale the day, the night before the election, and she looked at the machines and they seemed to be working, and then they broke down the next day. And she even, and I'm quoting her, she said, "In my opinion, the machines were programmed to do this and it was all planned." The process and narrative, both machines and people. And so, as we see, because of the lack of accreditation of the programs, it's not the machines themselves, it's who programs them, that the voters have no confidence in the vote, that their vote was actually counted and that there was tremendous fraud throughout this state of Arizona. And so, I strongly advise you not to certify this election because there's no confidence in the outcome because of the lack of good machines being correctly accredited. Thank you.
Philip O'Brien?
Yes, I'm Philip O'Brien from Sierra Vista. And I, first of all, I want to thank the Board, all elected officials, all civil servants for being here this afternoon, on Friday afternoon. Thank you. I also want to stipulate at the human level, I believe in the good faith and confidence of virtually everybody who's been doing the process. The question is, do we trust the people? Do we trust the machines? And absent proper certification, we can trust the people, we can't trust the machine. The interesting thing to me is the gold standard is to take samples to verify the machine. And then the amount of time that we could have been, that we've been discussing this, we could have actually done 100% recount and had that gold standard of the manual count. I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Paul Stein. I'm sorry, Brian Stein.
To whom? Jill gave three minutes. Brian, are you ready to?
I'll wait to see if anybody answers.
Okay, so, he gave what, one minute?
Two minutes.
Two minutes, so that means five we have now?
Correct.
Okay. All right, Richard Sisnar. Ed Kreiger. Pamela Gravely. Joseph Patterson. And Gwen Patterson. Those are the next five. Are you Richard?
Edward Kreiger.
Did I call your name? Yes, that's second. First one was Richard Sisnar.
Let me see if Richard is here first.
All right, Richard, are you online? 30 seconds. Unmute. Okay, we'll move on. Okay, and you're Ed?
Ed Kreiger.
And you're giving it to whom?
Sorry.
Who did you seed your three minutes to? Okay, Steiner.
Good afternoon, Joseph Patterson, Sierra Vista. A lot of information's been given to us this afternoon. Want to thank the folks who came down to tell us what they know about what's going on as far as machine certification is concerned. I think that personally, I don't have any, I think the county did a good job. I think Lisa did a good job. The report was good, the tally, the tabulation. I mean, I don't, personally, I don't see any problems with that. However, foundational of that, however, is whether the machines are actually certified. And that's the foundation. And I think it's so foundational that the Board should take pause for a couple of days to consider what's been said, to seek counsel from our county attorney as to a counterargument to what's been presented today, to try to establish in your own mind what you think is the foundational decision, whether the machines are certified properly or not. And I think it's just so basic, but it is so profound. And I think to make a decision about something like this without having more information would be detrimental, that we should take advantage of the situation to establish one way or the other in our mind whether these machines are certified or not before we certify the canvas. And that's all I have to say.
Gwen Patterson?
Since Sierra Vista, Arizona, how annoying. My husband always speaks first and I kind of agree with what he said. I think the issues brought up today were stunning. It's hard to assimilate all this, you know, AR this and, you know, blah, blah, blah. It's hard. I respect that you came down here and told us that and I, you know, I know you're great patriots and you care. But I think the Board of Supervisors needs time to just digest this, collect it, you know, collect this data and make a decision. What's one or two days to look at this and digest it? That's all I have to say.
This one's going to get me. Is it Dong Kwan?
Wow.
The first name.
One.
One, okay. And then we have Juan Nguyen. Hong Nguyen. Forgive me all the way down for mispronouncing, but I'm not familiar with these names. Tamara Birch. And Joe Clifton. And Corey Lorick will be on teams. Okay, so, we'll start with you, Mr. Kwan. Name, address, please.
My name is Wong Kwan and I live on 4747 South Santa Claus Lane in Cochise County, Arizona. Thank you so much for allowing us to voice our concerns. We have spoken about ARS. We have spoken about the technicals behind certification. I agree with the speakers that object to the certification of this election. I agree with the speakers that object to the certification of this election. And the reasons for the not being able to certify, I believe, is well articulated. We are liable to the law in terms of meeting the requirements of the law. But what I want to discuss here is something so obvious that I wonder if anybody has looked at the actual number that is up the number of voters who actually voted for the inspector of the mines in Cochise, Arizona. Paul Marsh won that election by 35, 35,741 votes. He outstrips the voting that was given, the votes that were given to candidate, gubernatorial candidate Harry Lake by 8,260. A 30% a 30% over for a gubernatorial candidate. It is not usual for the votes of a lesser office than the state governor to garner such a vote. And at the state level, Harry Lake received roughly 300,000 votes less than Paul Marsh. This is something that even without being a scientist, even without being a technical person, it should be obvious that something is very amiss here. What is amiss is that we do not trust machines to count our votes, no matter whether it's in certification or out of certification. Because the testing that is done on these machines do not cover all of the cases that needs to be covered. Software can control these machines in any way that it can. Unless you can read every line of code, unless you can certify the machines by making it transparent and open to the people to examine how the machine counts votes, how does it up to the second, up to the minute and during voting. There is no confidence. And so thank you for. Yes, thank you, my sister. And and so the confidence that we're placing in our elected officials here, we're not questioning our elected officials and the election workers. We believe that you acted in good faith. But unless you can examine every single line of code and just examine it running in real time, no one can say that we can have confidence in a machine that is totally black boxed and opaque. Even if we're standing over the machines and look over it, we cannot see what code is running, how it is counting the vote. When we insert our ballot in for counting, we know that we inserted it, but we don't know how the vote actually is counted. So what I am, what I am imporing you as our the closest elected officials at the county level, we're not questioning your integrity. We're not questioning your performance. We see that you do careful work, that you deliberate it carefully. The issue that arise between hand counting and machine counting, that is the main issue that we're contending here. We, the people, have no confidence in any machine, in any software. And we want this whole process to be observable, to be inspected by the people, to do it so simply that it makes it so hard for people to cheat, make it so hard for those who log into our system, hack into it and to steal our votes. We implore you to take the time to examine the claims that are made here by Mr. Woods, by Mr. Steiner and by Mr. Rice. We ask you to take a look at the statutes and how hand counting does not violate the statute. I would just refer this to you before machines. How did we count our votes? And today, countries like France, like Britain, count their votes by hand, the whole country. Can we get back to something so simplistic and so unhackable that we all can have confidence in the process, in the people that we elect? You are public servants. We ask you to serve in this capacity to bring justice to our votes. Would you please do so by taking the time to examine the statutes, the lack of transparency in these black boxes that none of us, zero, except the programmers? Thank you for hearing us out.
Next, Juan, please, no applause. You take orders well from those people. Tamara Birch. First name and address.
Good evening. It's been a long one. My name is Tamara Birch. I live at 215 Hereford Road in Bisbee, Arizona. I've been a voter in Cochise County for 42 years. I'm an activist and I believe in our system. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors, in particular the Chair and English, Peggy Judd and Tom Cosby. My respects go to them. It's hard to be any elected official. I'm here today to voice my view that the canvas for the election of the November 8th, 22 findings be accepted, that the results were submitted to the county elections department are accurate and to be officially acknowledged as verified by all those that were present. I've been a participant in previous official hand counts. I've helped under previous election department directors and under Lisa Mara. I'm aware that Lisa has conducted her duties following the state statutes, the election procedure manual, and has trained her staff and all those involved in the hand count to ensure that the outcomes of the participants match with 100% accuracy by the people and the tabulation machines. Something I hadn't written, but I feel strongly about if the time that it takes to do a hand count, I mean, they act like, oh, this is such an easy thing. And if they have 30,000 or more ballots to count and how many different, you know, propositions and those things, it's it's going to take more than you would expect it to take. I have the utmost respect as to the integrity, honesty and experience and the professionalism of our elections director and that all the laws are carried out as prescribed according to state statutes and procedures. Our voting system is secure and fair under the actions followed by the election county director. We must follow their attorney's advice and to maintain decisions that reflect appropriate standards. We must respect the rule of law and not interfere with deadlines. We must finalize the certifications of our ballots in a timely manner. I believe Lisa Mara should be the only one to have access to our ballots. If a recount is necessary, I trust in her abilities that it'll be carried out in a timely manner. Please respect our actions, our hard work of all the people involved. We have a safe, secure system reflecting the will of the people. Thanks to Ann English for her knowledge, patience and following the laws and respect to all our constituents. Thank you very much for your time.
Joe Clifton, no applause, please. Joe Clifton. Is that you?
Hello, Ms. English. My name is Joe Clifton. I'm born and raised in Douglas, Arizona. I remember Ms. English since I was a little kid. Thank you all, gentlemen, for coming and giving us an incredible lecture. That was amazing. It almost makes me wonder if Biden did get 81 million votes. Had a prayer real hard as to why I needed to be here and seen recently the call for a, I'm opposed to a certification, by the way, the call for a hand recount and all the controversy it elicited. And so much so that Clinton lawyers were coming down here to oppose that. Who has the most to gain from this? Who has the most to lose from this? You know, I'm a citizen of Cochise County. This is my hope. And a lot of people in my community have a lot of serious doubts about whether we are being disenfranchised from our vote by a machine. Constitution doesn't say we, the machines, or we, the programmers, says we, the people. And if there's something wrong with these machines, then we have the right to demand our votes and our voices be heard. And right now, there's a big division. And we're not going to cure this division by saying, okay, well, we're just going to accept the results because this is what the law says, or this is what the program says. No. It's going to cause a bigger rift among our citizens. If we want an election that we can trust, that we can count on, we need to rely on people. We need to have a different election, another election, and we need to have it counted by hand. All the Brazil, Berlin, everywhere else, they're showing that there's been election fraud and there's huge demonstrations again against it. It's happening in Phoenix right now. We have to stand strong and we have to say, we don't care what Maricopa County says. We don't care what Phoenix says. The Capitol does not rule here in Cochise County. We are the citizens of Cochise County. We see a problem and we want an answer to it. And we have rights and we will not be disenfranchised from our voices, from our votes, and we have to do what's right. And there's not going to be a coming together of of our citizens until this happens. It's just going to further and further create a bigger divide until it's too late. So whether you're one side or the other, it doesn't matter. We're not blue and red. We're copper. This is Arizona where Arizona is. So if you have a problem, then we need to solve it together. Whether it doesn't matter what side you're voting for, but let's all do it together and vote.
Your time is up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Brian Steiner. Seems to me as though you have eight, 11 minutes. Is that correct?
Could be 11.
11 minutes.
First off, you're probably aware or not aware that you actually purchase malware and antivirus software for your commercial over the counter systems. So and we all know that how great those antivirus and malware protections do for us here. You also, you can't observe the counting by the machines because you don't even know the algorithms being used since that is proprietary to a private company. I believe that that would be a violation of civil rights. And it appears that we seem to take our gaming system industry by far more serious than we do our election systems. So I kind of showed this last time I was here and I can't show it. But remember, at the time that your certificate of conformance was created in May 3rd, 2019, you had no lab certification for SLI. There was no certification of accreditation. So then after the affidavit came in, you get this certification that shows up January 10th or yeah, shows up January 18th of 2021. And this is in the presentation, the documents that I gave you. And so it shows up and the signature that it is is Brian Newby. So and I've done the research, the correct signature should have been Matthew Masterson. The EAC chairman change every year. It's actually kind of hard to find out who the correct chairman that's supposed to find this, to sign these documents. So we have the wrong signature here. So this makes this invalid, right? Nonbinding. So then according to the VSTL Manual 2.0, which is the manual that's under this certificate, it's not the new manual, it's the 2.0. Accreditations only last two years and then it goes away unless they provide the packet that's required to recertify them. They can't just have a forever certification. So here again, a violation. They've extended it to three years. Our evidence shows that not only Brian Newby left office and somehow he signs this document a year after he leaves office. How's that? Who committed fraud there? So then we go to, if we look at the new certificates that are out in January of 2021. Let's see. Well, it's it's dated February of 2021. It's it's signed by Mona Harrington, who's the executive director. The correct person should have been Benjamin Hovland should have signed that. This is nonbinding. Doesn't even matter if we go to this one or not anyways. You can't apply it because your machines are certified under the other certificate of conformance or the other certificate of accreditation. So then the EAC comes up with the 52 U.S. Code 20971C2. And I'm going to read it. And so if you just read that by itself, it's going to sound legit, right? So I'm going to read it. It says, approval by commission required by for revocation. The accreditation of a laboratory for purposes of this section may not be revoked unless the revocation revocation is approved by a vote of the commission. Sounds good, right? So again, we're taking that out of out of context rather than reading the whole thing. And it's pretty clear what's going on and how that relates. So I'm going to read it to you. At the time, it says certificate of testing in general, the commission shall provide for the testing, certification, decertification and recertification of voting systems, hardware and software by accredited laboratories. Optional used by states at the option of the state, which that's where 16442 qualifies in the law. The state may provide for the testing, certification, decertification or recertification of its voting systems, hardware and software by the laboratory accredited by the commission under this, under this section. Laboratory accreditation. Recommendation by National Institute of Standards and Technology. No later than six months after the commission first adopts voluntary voting systems guidelines under subpart three of part A of this subchapter, the director of the National, NIST, I'll just call it, shall conduct an evaluation of independent, non federal laboratories and shall submit to the commission a list of those laboratories the director proposes to be accredited to carry out the testing, certification, decertification and recertification provided for under this section. So approval by the commission. In general, the commission shall vote on the accreditation of any laboratory under this section, taking into consideration the list submitted under paragraph one or under paragraph one, and no laboratory may be accredited for purposes of this section unless it's accredited accreditation is approved by the vote of commission. Accreditation of laboratories not on director's list. The commission shall publish an explanation for the accreditation of the laboratory not included on this list submitted by the director of NIST and and under paragraph one. See, the continuing review of by NIST, one in general, it says, in cooperation with the commission, that's the EC, and in consultation with the standard board and the Board of Advisors, the director of the NIST shall monitor and review an ongoing basis the performance of the laboratories accredited by the commission under the under this section and shall make recommendations to the commission as it considers appropriate with respect to the continuing accreditation of such laboratories. Continuing accreditation of such laboratories, including recommendations to revoke the accreditation of any such laboratory. NIST is to recommend the revoking. It's not something that that the EAC can do alone. And then here we have the approval by the commission required by by for revocation. The accreditation of the laboratory for purposes of this section may not be revoked unless the revocation is approved by a vote of the commission. This gives them the ability to revoke a contract of an accreditation of a lab. If the lab fails to renew to revoke a contract of an accreditation of a lab. If the lab fails to renew, or violates their agreements that they sign, then they have the ability to break that contract. That's all this, this code is being used for. So then the transition until such a, as the commission provides for the testing, certification, decertification, and recertification of voting systems, hardware, and software by accredited laboratories under this section. "The accreditation of laboratories and the procedure for, for the testing, certification, decertification, and recertification of voting systems, hardware, and software used as of October 29, 2002 shall remain in effect." So nowhere does it, does it suggest that recertifications shall stop. If anything, it says they need to be continuing, and every two years. So you get in, and I'll show you what they took out on between the 2.0 manual and the 3.0 manual.
Could you tell me how many minutes he has?
I've got 2:49. Thank you.
Okay, then I'm going to call for a recess, and we'll let you begin again. We need a 10-minute break.
Okay.
So, you know, we've been sitting here listening to you, and it's, it's a time we have a personal break, so.
May I reclaim three minutes, please?
Are you a used car salesman on the side?
It interrupted my flow, so I would like three minutes.
Oh, don't want to, we've heard it before, so I could do that. So that would be, what time would we be back?
Madam Chair, it's 5:51 right now, so 6:01.
Okay, 6:01, we'll be back in session. Okay, recess is over. Go back to the... Mr. Steiner, I believe you have three minutes left?
Do I have three?
Just go for it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the difference between version 2 and version 3, the main things are, at the beginning, there's a lot of watering down of language and standards. The main thing is, is the removal of the two-year certification date. That's now gone in the 3.0 manual. And that is to basically try to get it in line with that section out of 52 U.S. Code, 52 U.S. Code, trying to get it in line with that. They still can't. They're going to have to change 52 as U.S. Code to get that to happen. Another thing that's quite unfortunate that they get rid of is, no longer do we get to see the DSTL letter of agreement or the DSTL certificate of conditions and practices. And I can tell you that the ones that they have currently are pretty suspect to be, to begin with. If you know signature verification at all, you're going to see that there's a person in there tracing maps. One looks like, could be her signature, and the other one looks like it's a third grader doing it, and it's totally different. So I, that's always, that's suspected as well. So now, from the 3.0 to the 3.0, we have less transparency going into that. And that is basically the main thing that, that I would say. And I would say that, you know, a disparaging remark that you gave me upon you a used car salesman is inappropriate, as well as telling a gentleman that you take orders from them, that you follow orders very well. I would be offended if that was me. So I think that was two rude moments for you, and I've did nothing but trying to be cordial. And anyways, thank you.
We have Mr. Paul Rice. I want to check to see if you believe that you have any minutes left.
No.
Okay. And we have Daniel Wood, that according to my record, you have three minutes.
I'm actually coming up here because the Lord just hung my butt today. All right. First of all, New York Times versus Sullivan, 1964, is a landmark U.S. Supreme Court decision holding the First Amendment freedom of speech protections limited to the ability of public officials to sue on for defamation. But in that, the Supreme Court, in an opinion written by Justice William Brennan, reviewed the matter against the background of profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, haustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and political, public officials. Noting that advertisement at hand would qualify for constitutional protection, the court considered whether its inaccuracies had forfeited that constitutional protection. The court ruled unanimously, 9-0, established the statement under the circumstances involving a public... All right. The court ruled that it was a fundamental principle of our constitution system that is essential to the security of our republic. It ruled that it was my First Amendment right and all their rights to come up here and speak, even if it gets robust and threatened. But I'm coming to you as a man of God. He convicted me. Me saying to you that I'm your huckleberry was wrong. I apologize for that. All right. We're all here trying to figure out and sit through the law. I feel that there's things that he might be doing is wrong. He feels there's things that y'all might be doing is wrong. Okay? One thing's for sure, guys, the marine in me gets angry sometimes, and it comes out, and I apologize. But one thing's for sure, we're all here trying to preserve our individual rights. Whether Katie Hobbs wins, or Carrie Lake wins, it doesn't matter at this point right now, because our election process is unlawful. What we need to do as a state of Arizona, and this nation, is bring it back to fundamental principles. And that is the rule of law, period. If this was done legally, and Katie Hobbs won, I respect that. I don't want her to, but it's, I don't care. But if Carrie Lake wins, I'm sorry, she's in office unlawfully. It is that simple. It is that simple. Right now, it is that simple. We have to get back to the rule of law in this nation. There's nothing else that we need to be doing right now but holding them accountable. Let them not sign off on this. And so the legislative branch, like all the lawyers around the state of Arizona and county board supervisors, is saying it's their responsibility. So don't sign off of this. Send it to the legislative branch. Let them deal with this. So they can call a special election, and we can do it without these unlawful machines. And we could do it with hand counts, which has been done for over 200 years.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, we have one last individual, and that is Corey Lorick from the Secretary of State's office. Are you, are you with us on, online, Corey?
Hi, good evening. I'm here.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. My name is Corey Lorick, and I'm the State Elections Director, speaking on behalf of the Secretary of State's Office in Phoenix, Arizona. So I want to address the comments about election equipment that were raised today. The equipment used in Cochise County is properly certified under both federal and state laws and requirements. The claims that the SLI testing labs were not properly accredited are false. The United States Election Assistance Commission has addressed this issue, explaining that an administrative error led to the lab not receiving an updated certificate. This did not mean that the lab was out of compliance, nor does it mean that they had lost accreditation. Under HAVA, a federal lab's accreditation cannot be revoked unless the EAC votes to do so, and they have not. Mr. Wood, Mr. Steiner, and Mr. Rice raised the same claims to the Arizona Supreme Court earlier, earlier this year, and the court summarily rejected them. The voting equipment has been thoroughly tested, both in the certification process and during both the pre and post-election logic and accuracy testing. The county's hand count audit also demonstrated that the election equipment accurately counted the ballots. Cochise County voters should have confidence that every eligible vote was properly counted. Finally, I want to thank Director Lisa Mara and the elections team in Cochise for conducting another well-run election. Thank you.
Board members, do you have any questions for the Secretary of State, for the county attorney, for, for anyone at this time?
Sure. Ms. Lorick, if you're still handy, I would have asked Mr. Rice, or one of our other presenters, what information did you request from the Secretary of State that was not provided, is what I would, because I didn't understand what you said. And since Ms. Lorick is here, I would suggest and ask that Mr. Rice perhaps be able to ask Ms. Lorick.
No, let's not go there.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine. And then I would have, what would obtaining that information have to do with our action item today? This is what I would have asked Mr. Rice if I had the, the opportunity, with, which is item number one, accepting the elections results. I'm going to just repeat that. What information did you request from the Secretary of State that was not provided? You talked about it like a three-month lag. What would obtaining that information have to do with our action item number one today, which is accepting the elections results? And then I would have asked Mr. Rice, what, would the county elections director be more likely to obtain the critical information? And we'll look into that. Hopefully, if Ms. Mara is able to obtain the information that Mr. Rice was not able to. Would you like me to comment further? Is it just my turn to comment?
Are you asking to be a go-between, between Mr. Rice and the Secretary of State?
Thank you. I will further define my, my outlook here. And I will end that in a motion, and if, with your permission. If it's my turn to talk, I would like to...
Well, let's, let's see if Ms. Judd has any comments before we go to another motion.
That's all right.
And I, and I do, and I do. I believe that Lisa Mara, who has, I've considered a friend since I've been at the county, has done a wonderful job at conducting this election. She has my appreciation and my gratitude. And I've never questioned her ability or her integrity, and, or her, and her actions have been amazing, and I, and I trust her in what she has done. And, and that is, including all the, the elections, and even prior to her being the election director. What, it is completely alarming that there is something going on. I appreciate Ms. Lorick for coming on and, and trying to straighten that out. I've done a lot of research on this myself. I'm very confident that we need, we need to make sure that we've drilled down to the lowest level on this, on something that's this critical and this substantial. I myself have a hard time trusting any computer. I don't even trust my cellphone, and it's a flip phone, and I don't trust it. It doesn't always give me results. It doesn't always, it's not always there for me. And so, it's, it's a difficult thing. I was not wrong, not ever one minute, asking for a hand count. And right now, we would be done with our hand count. We would have 100% hand count, and it would have backed this up, and we could say, say, see, in Cochise County, our machines are awesome, and our elections director is awesome. And this would have just not even been an issue. And you know, interestingly enough, when I proposed the hand count, when we began talking about it, I didn't even know that this accreditation was even part of the, the game. I had no idea. That came up much later, after I started working on this. So I, I love the requests. I love the speakers today. You are all very, very good, no matter what side you're on. I'm just tired of the division. I'm tired of it. But it's not enough to back down and not listen to the voices of the community members. And we have some very good citizens in this county. Some have spoken today, some have not. I am in strong favor of seeking more information on the legality of the machines, and how to get them to be certified properly. I don't mind using them, but I am 100% convinced that a hand count, 100% hand count is kind of important. And I also know that the legislature can do this for us. The legislature really can. And I believe they will. I believe that we have their attention. We have their, they have their best interests, or they have our best interest in mind. I, I feel sad that so many things didn't happen last time. There's still going to be some kind of a battle, but I want the legislature to have a chance. And, and I'm, quite frankly, a little bit undecided right now about what I might do today. But I don't have a lot of issues with the work that Ms., just bring it back to that, with, that, that Lisa Mara provided for us, and our wonderful election workers throughout the county. So I just want to say that. Thank you. And move on to whoever's talking next. Thanks.
May I ask in here, it seems as though we have Ms. Lorick from the Secretary of State's office, and she has stated that both the machines and the programs are certified. Are you asking for more than that?
I'm asking to, well, and personally, I will continue. I will continue with my research. And Ms. Lorick replied to me today a couple of times, giving me all the information I needed. She was as good as, she was as good as could be. I'm so grateful she's here tonight. Thank you.
So what is it you're looking for now? In order, the agenda today?
I just, I just made a comment.
Be able to certify the election results that you have complimented, et cetera.
By the way, I've certified several election results that were tabulated on these same machines that have issues. So I'm, I'm going to be ready to vote when it's time to vote. Thank you.
I do have comments.
Okay.
Which will end with a motion, and it goes like this. Well, first of all, in, I, I know a lot of people don't understand what's going on with various lawsuits, and particularly with Ms. Mara, but I want to say this, in her defense, which is public. I've said this before. When we go about expressing our concerns about freedom of speech, freedom of thought, freedom of association of our poll workers, we must be just as careful to protect those rights held by Ms. Mara. And another public document that I've already shared is, "I have no reason of this present time to think Cochise County's 2020 election was dishonest." I'm not saying that voting machines can't be hacked. I'm personally inclined to think they probably can be hacked. I do not know if they were hacked or not. Okay. Continuing. "I expect that the hand count, at whatever of the several levels that were pondered, would have confirmed the results posted that we have here that Ms. Mara gave us. I have attempted, and I believe Ms. Judd at least agrees, that we have attempted everything we could think of in the way of court action to confirm the accuracy of our voting machines." That was what it was all, always about. We weren't trying to subvert democracy and all that kind of stuff that we heard, heard of. "At present, my observation is that, reference these court cases, it is either effectively illegal or otherwise impossible to confirm the accuracy, the 100% accuracy of our voting machines. I'm very thankful, as I've said before, for all the participation we see here. And if we had the participation like we have now, all the time, the county and the world would be a better place." So I'm going to repeat what I had on the previous page. "I expect that the hand count, at whatever of the several levels pondered, would have confirmed the results that we have posted today." That's what I expected the whole time, just like Madam Judd said. That should be clear. And anybody who wants my public record, which I read a very small portion of, it, it is posted on the county website, and anybody can have it. That said, if our presenter's request is met by the proof that our machines are indeed legally, lawfully accredited, then indeed, we should accept the results as per the action item number one that we have before us today. However, if the machines have not been lawfully certificated, then the converse is also true. We cannot certify this election now with the machines not lawfully certificated by an accredited laboratory. This is my motion. Therefore, I move, we table accepting the election results until such evidence about the lawful certification and accreditation by a laboratory is presented and confirmed by persons with expertise in that field. That was a motion I'd be glad to repeat it.
Second, I'm, I want to, to comment that I believe I heard, and, and Ms. Lorick is on the line, so she can interject if I'm misstating this. She said that the primary presenters today had presented the same information to the Supreme Court, and they were turned down. So, is that, is that correct, what I said that you said, Ms. Lorick?
And then, of course, we're going to allow response from our presenters with an opposing viewpoint, are we not?
Ms. Lorick, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am. Yes, there was.
Yes, there was a, um, case filed with the Arizona Supreme Court earlier this year about these issues.
About the certification of the machines? I want to be specific about what the issue was.
So it raised questions about the accreditation of the lab, which is very different than the certification of the equipment, but I believe it's been confounded between the issues tonight. So just being very clear, the issue is the accreditation of the labs, which the labs have been properly accredited the entire time, and the election equipment is properly certified.
So if it's been through the courts, is that not?
You, you haven't allowed an opposing viewpoint. Is she, is, I, I've, I've addressed this, and I said, what information, as if I was asking Mr. Right, Mr. Rice, what information did you request from the Secretary of State that was not provided? And it, I, I suggest, you know, we've got both of them on the line. Mr. Rice is just ready to go. Let him talk, please.
Please.
If you, if you say no, I'll appeal the decision of the chair, and then it'd be up to, uh, Madam Judd to agree with me that we should let him and Ms. Rice off.
Madam Chair.
Or, excuse me.
Excuse me.
Ms. Lorick, talk.
Excuse me, Madam Chair.
You let her talk.
Madam Chair, there's a motion on the floor. There has not been a second on it, and there's conversation continuing about this discussion. So I believe that is improper.
Is there a second?
There, there was not a second to your motion. So we're back to the original motion. You have asked for clarification of, what a presenter today asked the Secretary of State that wasn't given, and I'm not sure that that's pertinent to.
But absolutely it is. That's what, that's what we're here for. To, to find out, are these machines, uh, accredited by, or?
Well, the Secretary of State's Office has said they are accredited.
Well, other people say they're not. Is, is she of higher and greater importance than our citizens? I think not.
Well, she is the Elections Director for the state of Arizona.
I appeal the decision of the chair. If you're going to say our presenters can't present, I appeal the decision of the chair. We'll hear for, more from Mr. Rice.
We, we heard all of the presenters present.
Okay, we need a vote on the motion to table. Or, okay, okay, then we didn't get a second. We didn't get a second, that's fine.
So is there any further discussion before I call for the vote on to accept the election results certified and submitted by the Cochise County Elections Department?
There is further discussion.
Madam Chair.
There is.
Madam Chair, I was going to ask that that, um, motion to table be repeated because we talked so much, if that's okay, please.
Therefore, I move, we table accepting the election results until such evidence about lawful certification by an accredited laboratory is presented and confirmed by persons with expertise in that field.
I didn't hear a time certain, and we can't table unless we have a time certain, and you had until, but I think we, this could be produced.
I, I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Judd, please repeat what you said, your lessons.
Time, I think this could be produced within a time certain. Um, and I have a question before I can second that, and that's what I was going to ask before also. What is the last day to certify this election legally?
Mr. Montgomery has the answer.
I think it's the 28th. The 28th. I gave him the answer.
Madam Chair, it's November 28th. So we need to make it time certain for the last day, and then we need to all work real hard at getting that paperwork. That shows the accreditation is, I wasn't looking for the accreditation today. I was looking for something else. Certification. I wasn't worried about the lab being accredited. For some reason, I didn't quite get that far in my research, so, well, maybe time made it, I may not get that far. So can we set up a time? Can we set up the 28th? I don't know what day that is. That's 10 days from now. So is that a Tuesday, Monday?
You know, I don't have a calendar in front of me, but, uh, if it, that would be fine, whatever you think. 28th is a Monday?
Then we need a proper motion for time certain.
That's what I'm waiting for.
Okay. Therefore, I move, we table accepting the election results until Monday, the 28th of November, until such evidence about lawful certification by an accredited laboratory is presented and confirmed by persons with expertise in that field.
I'll second it.
Okay, now that we have a motion in a second, I, I need to ask for some clarification of expectations of where this information is going to come from, and who's going to make, who's, who's going to decide that this is the correct information?
You and I and Madam Judd.
So information will be presented directly to us?
Sure. That's, that's what we're here for. Make a determination of who's right and who's wrong. And, and I think I said back there, Madam Chair, if you.
Well, you said of those people that are not, it just kind of, um, lose as to who's supposed to give that information? Repeat that part of your motion.
Lawful certification and lawful, about lawful certification by an accredited laboratory and is presented and confirmed by persons with expertise in that field.
That was my question.
Okay.
Who?
Well, I, I find that, uh, three of our presenters in the front row seemed like they had quite a bit of, uh, expertise in that field.
Consider them the experts in the field.
Uh, yeah, unless they, unless between them, they find out, you know, somebody else has more expertise in the field, that would be okay, too.
I think that, uh, the Secretary of State's Office, since they are the Elections Office of Arizona.
You know, they, they could come down, too.
Please, we're trying to, to hammer out the best decision possible here. And I think that, um, uh, Ms. Lorick, if you have that information that this board is now requesting with this, um, uh, agenda item, if you could please, uh, make sure that the board has this information in our hands, if you would send it to, um, uh, Tim Maddox, our clerk of the board, and he will distribute it to the board. Any information you have on the? Yes, everything that comes to us is public.
Sounds good.
It's a public document if it comes to us. So, um, did you hear that request, Ms. Lorick?
Yes, I did, and we will be happy to provide that information. I know I provided a lot of information earlier today to, um, Ms. Judd, so we will make sure that all of the board members receive that.
Okay.
And when would that be, Ms. Lorick?
She said she gave it to Ms. Judd today, and she'd be glad to give it to us, so I'm sure you have it, and you could send it online to us.
I want, uh, you know, everybody to know it as soon as possible, but I, I know that there's, you know, we don't.
Well, Ms. Judd has it right now, so she could share it.
What I received today didn't address whether, um, the SLI can, um, compliant, was in compliance or accredited at the time, SLI compliance was accredited at the time. What I, what I saw tonight, and what I've seen when I compared the two, I'm not quite positive that when our certificate was issued, SLI was actually in compliance. So I'd like to see the letter that said, from the federal government, that says they were always in compliance, or else some other proof of that from the EAC. I think I'm understanding more than, than I understood this morning, um, Corey, when I asked you the question. So I have a lot of stuff, which, quite frankly, I've tried to read all through, and you've been very helpful, but I, but I'd like to see that it, it was accredited at the time we received our certificate for our machine. Um, and that, and maybe the letter that said it never lapsed, that would be, any of those kind of things would help, but it, it should have been accredited according to statute and according to the HAVA, or HAVA, however people pronounce it. Thank you.
Okay, I, I think we've clarified now where, where we're going to be getting information from, and it's to come to the board.
Do we need to vote on the?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, um, set a time on this motion as, um, to change the, um, the date of the certified canvas until the 28th. Is that, um, sufficient? We, we need a time?
A time, sir.
We got the 28th. Do we need, say, 10 a.m. on the 28th? Since there's not a regular meeting that day, we usually say to the regular meeting.
10 a.m.
10 a.m., okay.
Sounds good.
So if we just add that to the motion?
Okay.
Okay.
Therefore, I move, we table accepting the election results until Monday, the 28th of November at 10 a.m., until such evidence about lawful certification by an accredited laboratory is presented and confirmed by persons with expertise in that field.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Uh, Chair's going to vote nay on this one, but there's two votes for yes, and so we will, uh, move forward, and we will again address this issue on the certification of our election results on November the 28th. I believe there's no further issue. It was to be, our next meeting was going to be on November the 29th at 10 a.m., but now it looks as though our next meeting will be, um, November the 28th at 10 a.m. in the Board of Supervisors hearing room. So having said that, meeting adjourned. Have a safe trip home.